All right, as I just said, it's not the talk area because that gives you a lot of reference on the space and it also answers some future questions you might have as far as what do we do with some of the extra stuff that's going to be displaced that needs to be put someplace. So having this area at the top is kind of a real bonus. This is the top floor. What's nice about this is the elevator obviously makes a function. But it's going to be displaced or what we need to find a home for. There's a lot of the files that need to be archived. There's a lot of equipment that needs a home. So, you know, we needed a place to put it. Usable up here to move that heavy equipment up. Plus the IT area, which is all that cranking area there. It's a lot of heavy equipment that has to go in there as well. So having access to move it up and get it in position. You know, that's obviously not doable. Help the elevator with this lot of expansion.
So in the E, just so it's not deceiving, there's a lot of mechanical equipment that is going on.
With the Phase 2, it's very, very effective because it gives you a location of where the call is coming.
So those aren't calling through Milton anymore, right?
No, we deal with them. And that cuts a lot of time, response time out. You know, it just takes another whole cog right out of it. So we went into Phase 2 and there's grant realizations, availabilities with that too. So it benefits for many, many reasons. But all the IT up here, all the security, the phone systems, the data recording, the 911 stuff, as I said, the radio equipment, all that stuff is all one place, all climate controlled, all out of the way. And it's going to be very, very efficient. Right now, we have this stuff everywhere, anywhere we can find a home.
So will the dispatches actually work here or it's just...
No, no, this is just the equipment. Yeah, this is just the equipment. And by the way, nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. So yeah, this is just the equipment and nobody really needs to come up here. You know, this is just kind of putting the stuff that we don't need to access a lot. Why take the good real estate? So that's pretty much what's going on up here. Bob, did I miss anything?
No, no, John, I think you did a great job. You can almost tell by the number of these four-inch conduits how much technology is coming up here. I mean, it's amazing.
That right there, yeah, that's just data. That's not power, that's just data cables.
What's that material that it's made of, these columns? What's it made of?
Oh, that, well, I mean, it's called EMT. It's just typical electrical conduit. It goes by...
Communicate with who they need to communicate, you know, all on the same level, all within a couple of doors of each other. Patrol is downstairs, patrol sergeants are downstairs, the booking area and all that stuff. So that's what patrol functions are doing most of the time. Administrative stuff up here, investigations, XO duties, chief's duties and the administrative assistant, that's on this level. So just the way it's configured that way is very, very efficient. There's not a lot of up and down the stairs, you know, stuff that needs to happen. Everything you need for the job you're doing on hand is at the same level. So down here, we're going in this area here. Now, there's a couple of walls missing. There's a wall missing here, I believe. This is the foyer right here for the mail locker room. And I have to tell you, I just gave a tour to some of the guys. You might have seen them leaving. This is the first time they'd seen it. They were so thrilled about having the space. You can't really appreciate this until you see what they're doing now. It's kind of amazing that they're able to function. But this is a nice, state-of-the-art, organized locker room. And one of the things, you know, been on a cross a long time, there's two things that are very, very important to patrol police officers. Their cruisers and their locker area. That's like their personal spaces where they change. It's the start of their tour to get their head straight, the end of the tour to unwind. The cruiser, they spend most of their time in. And, you know, we're really ticking all the boxes here. You guys have been fantastic with the support of the cruisers. You know, the guys take care of them. They love them. They're safe, they're clean, you know, they're, it's perfect. Now, this finishes it. You know, this is, they were so thrilled. I wish you guys could have seen their faces when they were here. Saying, "Oh my God, this is where the locker room is." And it's not even done yet. So they're just ecstatic about it. There's two showers, there's a head and the sink is over here. And I think there's another sink set up over here.
Is this the ancillary fire system?
The black pipe is the sprinkler system and the caffrey you see is domestic. So, yeah, so I mean, that's, this is their locker room. And over here on the other side... Officers, our communications persons, this is their area. They have a shower, there's a head there and the sink setup is there. And I believe there's two, if I remember right, two banks of lockers here with a bench in the middle. I'm not sure how old this picture is, but yeah, that's it. That's definitely it there. Yep. So there's, yeah. There used to be an extra locker, but we had to move it up to that conduit. Again, to give you another visual, that's how much IT, and that's just IT. That's how much IT is running this building with video, security, key card access to all the doors, you know, just our in-house CAD systems. There's a lot, a lot going on here. But this is, and plenty of room for expansion. You know, we can get a couple of lockers.
Hey, John?
Yes?
You should tell O B one two that not only you really help with all the 911, but, you know, we really owe this guy in the world because he's done even his time and effort and the whole five yards.
Well, you just gave the summation of my presentation.
I prefer to be as invisible as I can be. It's...
So coming a little bit further down, every doorway you see is a security swipe card doorway. I'm not sure how many are familiar with how that works, but everyone gets a FOOD and FOOD that's assigned to them has certain accesses. So certain people can access that. This is the armory. This is where we keep all the ammunition, you know, firearm servicing, cleaning and all that stuff. And the extra firearms, they're all stored in this armory here. And I know you're looking at it, I'm like, "How many guns are there?" There's a wall up there. So there's, yeah, it's a wall right here. So this is the armory and this is a solid wall. This area right here that I'm standing in is the secured property area. For evidence, like there'll be drugs, guns and cash is separated. You know, that's for accreditation purposes. It's separated in a separate secured area. So that's what you're looking at here. The armory with a sink and a cleaning area and all the equipment you need for that. And the secure property area is here with this access. Now, this big area right here, this whole area is regular evidence storage. It'll be all shelves and standard evidence. What we have now for evidence is an eight-by-eaten room that's supposed to be a cell, a jail cell, but we had to re-task it as an evidence room and close it off and it is full. So, because you had to hold on to it for so long and it's just, it's very cumbersome. This is going to be a game changer for organizing and...
So you'll be able to bring it in, record it, process it, store it properly?
Yeah, I want to tell you how that works. It's really cool. This is really kind of impressive. I love it. So there's a security camera that'll be on the hall there. And every time anybody tries to access this, you set up so that'll take a picture of who's accessing this processing area of the property. This opening you see here, this is the regular guys. I'm not even going to have access in here. You have one person that's assigned to, that's for continuity of evidence, one person that's assigned to manage the property room. Whoever that person is, they're the only ones that have access. That's why you have the mobilization through video and all that. This is where the patrol officer takes in some evidence or whatever it may be. There's a specially designed locker that goes here. It's a pass-through locker. There's a refrigerated section, you know, because there's a lot of other kits that need to be refrigerated and bodily fluid type evidence and stuff like that that has to be preserved, but it has to be refrigerated. And there's certain different size configurations of pass-throughs. And they're separate lockers. You open it up and you put the evidence in and you, when you close it, it locks. You can't, you don't have access until the person that's on this side releases it for the next thing, takes it out and processes it from this side. So once property or evidence is submitted, you can't touch it again without having a consultation with the evidence officer. So this really, really locks down a lot of the process that really needs to be in place to be, you know, to maintain the continuity of the evidence chain. So this is going to be really nice. And then there's a secured door behind him that it will access once it's processed, packaged, labeled, whatever needs to be done to it. It'll be catalogued and stored in that bathroom. So this is, this is a processing area. There's a fueling station and all that stuff that'll be going in here. So, you know, we do a lot, a lot of our work right in here.
So this looks like the evidence kind of goes in one door, through another door. And then if it's real, if it's, like you said, the drugs and guns will go into a third.
Yep. So the first, the first line of continuity isn't here. Well, the first line is putting in the cameras. Then the evidence officer comes in from this side, the secured side, takes it out, puts it on the bench, labels it, processes it, does whatever they need to do with it, whatever it is. Then they'll, they'll catalog it, swipe, go through this area. This is like a big, huge closet with a bunch of cells. You know, it'll be catalogued in here and marked where it is in this room. And that's where it stays until the court needs it or whenever it's going to be finished, whatever its processing is. And this area stays clean, you know, and this area is where everything is stored. In this area right here, if there happens to be guns or drugs or cash, it gets swiped and goes into a third layer of security where it's kept here separately. And again, that's a lot of that's accreditation, you know, and compliance and conformance with that. So now we will have the proper processing for evidence in property too, just for your comfort.
So you didn't have that when you were in the cellar?
No. No, as I said, what we have is we converted one of the jail cells. This is the detective's office. Well, actually, this door, you can see that barely kind of aligns the floor. This is going to be, this area right here is a janitor closet. There'll be a slop sink here and janitorial supplies will be in here for this floor. But this door leads into the detective's office and this will be his space right here. This I love. This is fantastic. This is a conference room. And we don't have, you know, we don't, you know, it's, when we have to meet with any, with more than four people, it's in the middle of the hallway here. You hope there's no distractions. And this is a really good space. It's going to have all the data and power outlets, floor mounted, come out. We have a speaker on the conference table for conference calls and that sort of thing. You know, a nice racetrack design table. And you can come in here and you can have a meeting. And that's, the other reason why that's so critical in the operation is, I'll take you over here in a second, but across the hall is the training room, which we don't have. And that's huge. So the guys are... I think that was the third thing that they were thrilled the most about. So we have the training room, but that also doubles as the E O C. So when there's a Seabrook emergency or even a local emergency for anything, we've activated it for, you know, situations on islands, storms, or whatever it might be, we activate the E O C over there. And I'll get into more detail with that. But what this right here gives us, there are key personnel that need to be having a different dialogue than the operations people that are over there. They're on the phone, they're dealing with other agencies. You need a place to sit down and converse and brainstorm. The select board might want to come in and be involved with some decision-making processes. This is the place to do it now, aside from all the activity that's happening. So this affords us that, that real estate to do that, which is absolutely a game changer, you know. And I hope you folks never have to experience it, but if you do, you'll be very appreciative of this space if we ever had to.
Well, and give us some examples of historically what would cause something like that? Would that, would the houses come into the ocean?
That's, that was the one I was going to use, you know. That is a very specific, you know, that was, that was, it was a localized, you know, emergency. We had our command center set up out on the island, our command post. But that wasn't even sufficient. We were actually off-site. And I know Jeff, I'm sure you remember. We were off-site trying to find real, find places to, you know, to work and meet. And we would end up basically just finding any place that we could. And I think a couple of times we had to use Piddle Hall, which was fine, but that was also being used as a sanctuary. So now you're trying to find a pool in Piddle Hall to have a conversation and make plans.
There's nothing like a cold trailer?
Yeah, and the trailers, I mean, it's literally a landscape trailer with the tables set up in it. That was our, that was our conference room. And, you know, I mean, we have a lot of people. You have the senator, you have Senator Ta that was out there. You have, you know, a lot of the concerned homeowners, a lot, you know, building experts. You have a lot of different disciplines coming together. And now, now there's actually a place you can just stop, take a breath and make some plans while operations are still happening unhindered. So this is going to be, this is going to be huge for the town, I think. And kind of going across the hall here, this is kind of a neat little, and this one got snuck in on me. I didn't even realize this, looking at the plans. I think Bob snuck this one in. But if you see the hallway here, it's a lot wider right here. This sets back to accommodate cabinetry and, you know, maybe it's bondo cabinets or something, you know, something to put, you know, what we call quartermaster supplies, paper, pens, you know, office equipment, things you just need, you know. Plus, if that's the E O C, stuff the E O C might need, have access to. So there's a, you can go as long as you want to with a bank of usable space for storage. It's kind of like an RV, this place. You know, I mean, every crack and cranny, everything was used and planned. And it's kind of neat to watch it come together. But, you know, this would be a good place for that sort of stuff, you know, the stuff you have to store. When you need it, you need it. When you don't, get it out of my way. You know, this is a good place for that. This room right here is the training room. And the things we'll be able to realize with the training room that we can't now is we'll be able to realize a lot more diverse trainings because if you host, and a lot of these programs, if you host the trainings from M P I, there's all different ones, but if you host a training, you get a lot, you get a lot of benefit from that. They'll train, you'll get the benefit of the training for your people with tuition free because you're hosting it. You know, and so there's a lot, there's a lot of benefit to being able to say, "Okay, look, we can, we can do a training, you know, whatever's available, you know, whatever, whatever we think we benefit, we can do that and we can open it up to other people. And by hosting it, we'll get a benefit for that." So this training room, not only for the training itself, but just, you know, just the financial help. You know, it might not be a lot, but every little bit helps. So we can do that.
John, isn't it, you know, I haven't had the credit at Police Station two, the great boost to everyone's careers and everything else?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. When you, when, yeah, it's just, what it does is it gets you professional right out of the gate. This is how it's supposed to be. You know, and make no mistake, our guys are professional. They are absolutely professional. But what they've made work over the years that I've been here and just made work and with a smile on their face and bouncing this, that is nothing short of amazing to me. And I can only imagine how much more. I don't know how they're going to do it, but how they're going to exceed what they've already shown us in a facility like this. I just can't, I can't even imagine. I'm very excited to see. I think that's going to be very inspirational. What we're going to have here is a whole bank of the teachable, the teach aids, you know, the smart board, you know, smart TV. I'm going to be embarrassed when I say, I think the smart board is, you know, you can all touch, move things. It's all stuff for training. It's all new stuff that I haven't quite seen yet. Kind of interested in that. Podium here in the, so the class will be facing this way and that's the entrance and exit, you know, to the classroom. And I will tell you this, I've been to a lot of trainings with police officers. They're the worst students, okay? I'll come clean on that. Police officers are the worst. They're the ones that the beepers go off. They're the ones that have to get up and answer the phone. They're the ones that have to go to the bathroom every ten minutes. They're the ones, you know, that's, that's what they are, you know, and that door really mitigates a lot of the disruption. Having a class facing this way and, you know, going in and out that way, you know, keeps the continuity of class going. So we were happy about seeing that configuration. That door right there will be, will be security accessed and that goes into the admin area. So you have to have the FOOD or whatever to go through there. So we can host civilian classes, other police department classes. We can do things in this room and have access from the downstairs lobby right up through here. And I'll show you how that works over there in a minute. Right here, this space, with the light, actually, this is a closet. You can almost see the shadow of a line where the wall's going to be. There'll be, there'll be a wall here and this is going to be a closet for storage for the needs of this room. That might be all the tubs that we have for the E O C, you know, for the Seabrook stuff. And one of these days, I'd love to show you guys how that all works. It's quite the operation. There's a bunch of tubs, a bunch of binders.
Once you get it up and running.
What is the E O C?
Emergency Operations Center. I'm sorry. Yeah. And what happens is if Seabrook, they do a lot of drills, but if there was an actual emergency or in the drills, there's an activation. It's pretty impressive to see. There's a lot that goes on. And part of what goes on, especially when you have a training room that's doubling as an E O C, you have to set it up. And so each desk or, you know, each training station, when it's a training room, now becomes an operations center component. Like I used to be the transportation coordinator. So I get my binder that says my protocols and what I need to do as the transportation coordinator. Plug in my phone and I have my workstation and I do my duties in, you know, as it relates to being the transportation coordinator. There's these special needs coordinators. There's the Rad Office. There's a bunch of different assignments and they'll all be situated in here, which kind of goes back to what I was saying. All that's happening here. All the planning and stuff is happening across the hall. So it's just, it makes it so nothing interferes with the other units of work. Those needs, the infrastructural needs to set up the E O C, I envision them being set up in here. You know, accessible as far as you come off the cots and set everything up really quick and off you go. So that, this is, this is a nice critical space. It keeps this area nice and clean. Any questions about any of that so far?
I'm wondering a lot. Why is that window like that?
I said the same thing. I asked the same thing. And so what it is, is this, this is the temporary floor. And that's actually the landing of the stairs.
I guess.
It's funny because I asked the same thing. I said, "Wait a minute, that's kind of a weird place for a window."
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, you know, this is where they're going to land it getting from here to the main, so it looks like a house. But the wall being built is nice.
Yeah, the goal of Alicia was to minimize any glazing on this side and eliminate all foot traffic or vehicle traffic because we're definitely obvious. And it made sense too, where we still share the fire hall for voting, having all the parking on one side because they call me during election day.
So then, so this is the maintenance and training area. And this is the foyer. It comes to the balcony and elevator. So the elevator is going to be access controlled, obviously with the walls, the black, or there'd be a bypass. Hold your turn here. You know, dispatch will be on the bypass and it may disfunctional. But the elevator will dump out right here. And you can see the shadow on the wall here, a man on the floor. You can see that's going to be a wall there. So you walk up the stairs when you come off the elevator and you're in an enclosed, secure area. You can't go anyplace from here unless you have access or you're given access. Right about here, there's a window, a service window. And the administrative assistant, this is her area. And she'll be able to greet and, you know, facilitate anything that happens here, make sure people get to where they need to get to, contact whoever that person's looking for and make arrangements for that, you know, for that meeting. But they'll, this is like the holding area, you know, come up and meet and be allowed in through that door right there. So her space would be, I'm envisioning, you know, lateral filing cabinets here, desk, you know, her printer, her stuff that she needs to know. But here would be a workstation for copiers, you know, and, you know, table that, you know, assemble documents or whatever, kind of tucked off, kind of accessible to everybody else in this hall. So this would be the admin area. And she's got a really cool building though. It's kind of nice.
Speaking from somebody whose office is an inside office, it's nice to see.
Oh, and natural light, I can imagine, yeah. So then you walk down here.
And the convenience too, John, having a bathroom right here for you, for training, you know, seeing where you're looking at.
Yeah, you can puzzle right through to your bathroom. This right here is the chief's office. And this, you can kind of see a shadow on the floor. Yeah, that's right about here to, right about with that line, right about here, I think, is the bathroom. This is going to be the bathroom. This is the deputy chief's office. So, yeah, any questions about the second floor? Good, now we get down to the fun side.
So probably when you walk into the police department, well, I shouldn't say that because I haven't read upstairs, but before you went upstairs, you walked into a postage stamp. Stepped into the...
Oh, yeah, that's exactly what it is now, yeah.
It was a postage stamp.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is now. The foyer over, where I have right now is about, it's about that.
So it's bigger than you had downstairs?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a little bit bigger. Yeah. Oh, and you're talking way back?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was even smaller. Oh, yeah, you're right. With that bench right there.
Yeah.
But, um, so I'm going to talk about that door in a minute. We'll circle back to that. It's a very important door. So this door right here is probably going to be mostly used by the employees reporting and leaving, going on up duty through here. It comes in, they'll go up the stairs to the locker area. It's down this end. They'll do their business and do it, you know, get ready to go. But this is also, they can come through with it. Again, everything's security access. They can come in through into here. Now, I'll start over here and then we'll work our way up. This is a very, very important area. I always kid my clean man, my clean officer, Mike Croto, he's the one that takes care of all the cruisers and everything. And I say he's got the biggest office of everybody. So this is, this is the garage. This is just the regular garage for storage. We have the motorcycle. We have the M1 ATV. We have a lot, a lot of small pieces of equipment that right now they're being stored in containers and trailers, you know, here and there and everywhere.
Scattered, right?
Yeah. And the other thing that's nice is Mike Croto, he's very proficient in wiring the cruisers and setting them all up. And, you know, he does it, he does it at his barn in his house, right, at his house. And he doesn't, saves us a ton of money and enjoys doing it. So we can set up the tools that he has and the equipment that he has to take care of the little stuff, you know. We don't have to wait for it to get done by having it sent out. He just does it. We can store our equipment inside. We can get a cruiser out of the snow or out of the weather if we have to, clean it up, do whatever we have to do. So this is, this is just a nice area to take care of the equipment as needed. That's mechanicals there. That's electrical there, those two areas. Nothing really other than that. This is a really nice garage space.
Well, that'll be a garage door, John, right?
Yep, yeah, there'll be a roll-up door. This right here is a janitor closet, with your small kitchen bag and all that equipment. The other thing that's, we'll go over this stall. This is a huge, huge moment for a law enforcement police unit. So this is the Sally Court. And what the Sally Court is, when you have somebody in custody, we truly believe that somebody that's placed under arrest or brought into a police station, they're innocent until proven guilty. They have a right to privacy. They have, you know, I mean, it's, the way it is now to be paraded in public outside our, the current station, going through a door and with the butchering and everything right there, that's not appropriate. I wouldn't want a family member being exposed to that, you know. People have bad days, they make mistakes and they end up here. That doesn't make them bad people. That doesn't mean they need to be, you know, paraded. This is privacy and it's safety. But in that order, I mean, it's just affording them that privacy, I think, is very, very important. A cruiser comes in here with the custody, that door comes down and before, this door, which I'll talk about in a second, is secured and it will not unlock. And that door will not be operational until that door is down. That's usually how it works, you know, the configuration is set up through the network. So this is always a closed area. You can't open anything up with the access to the outside. So that door comes down, then you open up the door and you take the person out of the cruiser and you're in handcuffs. This door here opens up and with all this standing, this is what we call a holding area. So this is a secure detention rated door here. They're coming in here and it's actually, for all, you know, intense purposes, a cell, but it's not really a full cell. It's a folding area. There'll be a wall here that's not up yet, a mason wall. And there'll be a mason wall here. So it'll come together right about here. And this is where the detainee, the detainee will be first placed. Once they're secured there, the officer can now come secure his firearm and come through that door, which is obviously separate from anything else. Just opposite that door is another detention door. When the officer is ready to process that person, or persons, I mean, it's not uncommon at all to have more than one person in here, you can now take them on a controlled way, bring them over to the booking table that's going to be over here. And it's a long counter. It's going to have a spit screen. It's going to have a rail on the front to secure handcuffs too. And, you know, the booking computer, the breathalyzer machine, all the equipment that the officer needs to process whatever that person's here for will be right here. And once that person's processed... And once that person's processed and being held, you know, whenever it's gonna be, you know, wherever he's gonna go, what he's gonna do, those are the holding cells.
John, you mentioned, too, that the Sally Court has to be big enough to accommodate
The ambulance.
The ambulance, which has to be, get a full gurney all the way around it, that's an accreditation.
Yep, yep, that's true.
We were debating on sizes, here, looking through shrink square footage, and that was one of the key factors, was you have, if you have a person who that gets sick, that you would have to be able to put the ambulance inside here.
And it goes back to the privacy, too. You bring the ambulance in, now it's closed, it's closed, it probably wouldn't be putting the ambulance in, and then we're through there, and I'm glad you're willing to bring that up. So, yeah, so that accommodates all those needs. So over in here is just gonna be the working area for the officers to do the processing, the bank of printers, the property lockers of the custody, where they take their property that they can't take with them in a cell, then cataloged, restored, and secured. So all of that happens back here. And then we have the two cells. Now, what's kind of nice is there has to be site-sound segregation and compliance with accreditation in the cells. So what you see here is, there's going to be a wall here, and there's a door. This is basically a foyer to the cell, and then there's the cell door, and then this is the cell. So that's the buffer between what's happening out here and being in the cell. You see this opening and all this here, because there's a lot of mechanicals, the toilets and all that stuff haven't been put in yet, this will all be closed up with detention area certified plumbing. So now we have two cells that are compliant, in compliance of site-sound segregation, and with the DPH compliance, and there's a lot of compliances that have to happen there. Now we have that. So now they're secured there, right here, or right about here, we just picked it up about a month ago, is what we call LiveScan. It's actually, it's a fingerprinting system that is inkless, and it goes, it's computerized, and it goes right into the APIS systems. So if somebody doesn't want to identify themselves, if they're in the system, we get their fingerprint, we'll know who that person is, you know, if they've been put in the system before for something. We've usually had to take, we'd go to Middleton, sometimes Salisbury, if their machine's up, if they, you know, it's been kind of an inconvenience. But the other thing that you can use it for is for firearms processing, you know, licensing, and no more ink pad, you know, any of that stuff, it's clean, it's nice, you know, the citizenry, you know, getting, you know, their licensing, they just can do it right there, it's done, it's over, and it's quick. So that system, which we're pretty excited to get, that's right here, that's gonna really make things a lot easier.
You have, you have two cells, too?
Yep, two cells.
That enough?
I hope so. I hope so. On a real bad day, I mean, you can double, you know, you can double up, you know, we, you know, that's within reason to do that. And we do have the holding area here, and, you know, we have to.
But you have to separate men and women, right?
Yes.
What about juveniles?
Juveniles, too, yep, yep, they have to be separated. Juveniles, usually, what we'll do is, we won't even put them in a cell, we'll sit with them until, you know, the.
The guy.
Yeah, you know, I mean, we make accommodations that way. But, yeah, I mean, male-female segregation, absolutely. And there's enough room, you know, we don't usually keep a lot for a long time, we usually can get, you know, get things worked out to get them in and out, but you still have to hold them, you know, for a considerable amount of time. So that, yeah, to answer your questions, we've been doing with one cell for a long time, and it does, it gets bad, you know, I mean, you don't want to leave people just cuffed to a wall or anything like that, that's not appropriate. But this is going to ease that up a little bit.
One of the things, too, that John will get into is the way this building flows. It gives you some benefit when you're starting with a blank slate, and so as John's saying, you're getting fingerprinted here, you're in holding, now you have to get bailed.
Yep.
So introduction there, how all of these rooms kind of align across from each other.
Yep, exactly. So what basically the process is, is after a person's charged, and we do the booking and all that, they are usually released on either personal recognizance, or bail, or whatever the bail clerk decides. Eighty percent of the time, they're being released. So the process of that is the bail commissioner comes out on site, fills out some paperwork, explains some things to the person, and they go on their way. We do that in a hallway now, over there, it's just not, it's not really conducive to efficiency. Now, what ends up happening is we'll have the bail commissioner, this is the door that the bail commissioners, this room right here. This is basically, it's an interview room, if you wanted to, you know, you can interview somebody here, you can interrogate here, or, you know, just, it's a very sanitized processing area that's just a table, a chair, no frills, nothing fancy, it's just a place to sit down, set some papers down, have a conversation. The bail commissioner will come in here and sit, the detainee will sit, they'll do their paperwork, and then, when they're done, they go off that door, that's the door I was telling you about before. They don't have to go back through the station, they don't have to do anything, that door puts them outside, and they're right waiting outside that door, and off they go.
So they come in?
They come in through the Sally Court.
Yep.
They come out into the holding area. When we're ready, we take them out of the holding area, do the booking, put them on the wall, do all the bookings, they're put in the cell, the bail commissioner shows up at whatever time that is.
Yep.
Comes in here, sits here, and does the paperwork, we go get him out of the cell, bring him through that door, bring him in here, have a seat, talk to the bail commissioner, they do their business, you're all done, you're all good, open that door, and send him out.
So you're walking, so it's me walking from this room as a prisoner into that room to be bailed.
Yep.
And then you're now walking out of the front of the building.
Right. Where does the bail commissioner come in?
He would probably, we'll get the camera here, and we will have a conversation with them to tell what we, every department's different, we would say, hey, go stand in front of the camera and wait, we'll buzz the door, we'll hit the button, and you can come right in. This is a secured door here, obviously, so if somebody does come out through there, all these doors are secured, so the most they can do is cause a ruckus in a hallway. They can't go anywhere, they can't do anything. This is the only place they'll have access to go. So, yeah, so this is, you know, again, you know, to Bob's point, this is the, just the flow of all the disciplines being able to do what they need to do in one general area is great for operations. So any questions about anything going on in there, or anything we've talked about? No? Okay, moving down the line, this area right here, where JR is, is the, this is, okay, this is the bathroom. So the dispatch area will have access to a close-by bathroom. And we're about to talk about this room right here, where this door is, this will be a wall here, and right about here is a wall. This is the report writing room. This is where the officers, after the arrest, they can come in, shut the door, sit at a desk, and type the report up, do further investigations, it's a quiet place for the officer to do the rest of the work that comes with, you know, an arrest, or an investigation, or whatever. So that's, you know, this is what the report writing room is, right here. It's, you know, it's small, but it doesn't have to be big, it just has to accommodate one officer, the commandant, do his job.
So that's also gonna be used for your habber master.
Yep.
Animal control, so it's kind of the catch-all room.
Yep.
For those that don't have an office, or are aligned with, you know, the department.
Yep.
So it's like a touchdown, so we're in it?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what it is.
Yeah, because they're all, they all have access to our network as far as they have IDs in our system, so, you know, like Carol, she has to do reports, you know, for animal control situations, she can come in here and do that, the habber master has to do daily reports, weekend reports, he can come in here and do that. So it's just a great, as you say, a great catch-all.
Yeah, I mean, there's been some changes like that due to COVID, because originally that was a counter on the hallway, and certainly that wasn't gonna fly post-COVID. And I think the same thing with, I'm gonna call them sneeze guards and booking, they weren't on the original schedule, but post-COVID, it's, we have to incorporate it now.
Yep.
Which is good at this point, because it's the lowest cost dollars, but it's still dollars, though.
Yes. We have to have.
Well, it.
And not everybody's happy to be here when they're there, so we also call it a picture. So it's nice for that. So that's the bathroom, and directly across the hall from the bathroom, this is the break room. And we set up really nicely, you know, with all the amenities you need in a break room, you know, there'll be a counter with a microwave, coffee maker, there'll be a stove, sink, refrigerator, table, and again, in functionality, just the way everything flows, you have, the patrol is on, they're gonna be utilizing this, they're on this floor, the dispatcher's right across the hall, they should come over, he can come over, and throw something in the microwave, and still be within striking distance of their duty assignment. And, you know, it's just like, everything's accessible right here, the bathroom, they can go right into the bathroom. It's kind of funny, Bob will probably chuckle a little bit, but one of the modifications I asked for, that, you know, that is kind of important, is putting a phone in that bathroom. We actually have a telephone in that bathroom, not the 911, because that will ring and somebody else will pick that up, I mean, we have the backup departments, but the in-house calls, we get those, you don't know if it's an emergency, you know, some people still call, you know, the regular business line, and it turns out to be something that's, you know, a little bit more than just a business call. So we want to make sure that the dispatcher has access to a phone, so we have a pad and a phone right in that bathroom, just for that reason, it's kind of odd to think that way, but that's, you know, you gotta think of that. Now, we'll get into the dispatch, actually, why don't we come back this way, let's walk in, I think the only access is here, so let's just walk in here. This is really cool, this area idea is pretty impressive. So as you see, there's a step down, watch your step. Now, this is, when this is done, where we're standing will be up to grade, with the regular floor. This is all recessed, but, you know, to accommodate the technology. This is, any modifications that have to be made, they're all, it's a panelled floor, section, you can pick up sections and say, you know, we need another workstation right there, you don't have to figure out how to run something, you pick up the sections you need, and you run it, it's all underground. Everything up here is clean, everything runs underneath, and it's just, it's gonna be so nice, because if you have the opportunity to go see what we have now, it's, you'll see why this is.
Maybe that might be worthwhile, on the way up.
Yeah, if you're interested, you know, it's.
Just a reminder, I think you all have a meeting tonight at six o'clock, so just managing the clock to give you a little bit of.
Supper time?
Well, just.
It's open for the time.
They're welcome to do whatever you want, they just didn't want you to, next thing you know.
This is just so exciting, John.
It is, I have a hard time quelling my enthusiasm, so if I get going, just tell me so.
So these temporary, these false floors are, you know, are what everyone's doing, because you can only get conduits in the right spot, and then you can't be sawcutting concrete to make a modification, you know, over a technology cycle change, so.
And these conduits you see down, coming down, those are two-inch?
Yeah, two-inch.
Two-inch, yeah, those two-inch, that quarter, two-inch right there, that's all, this is just data, this is just the data cables, one of them's gonna be 911, I think one of them is, might be dedicated to MEMA, I'm not sure, and this is, you know, all other stuff. And these are, all these conduits you see going in there, that's all power. The 911 system, from the state 911 department, it is like, it is like a complete infrastructure within, of its own, inside the building. The only common place that it all comes together with our building is at the breaker box, where there's a two-pole 30-amp breaker, that, that's the only thing we have supplied, we just need a place to get our power. And everything, all the circuitry, everything off of that, is they, you know, they put it in, it's their separate system, they don't want to have any mingling of anything, their outlets are all marked differently, you can tell which ones are theirs, which ones are not. It's pretty cool, because I've seen them set up twice now in my career, and just watching them do it, it's like, there's a lot to it, and it's kind of neat, you know, but that's what you have to plan on, if you have to facilitate in a new building, you know, it is kind of proprietary, obviously, to a police station, some of the stuff you have to, you know, look ahead on. So basically, in here is your dispatch consoles, they're basically U-shaped, the primary one is here, with all the stuff that the primary dispatcher will have, there's some space in between, and then there's a secondary one here. And what's unique about Newbury's configuration or requirements is that we have the EOC, we have MEMA, which is Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, we have to comply with certain things with them, and they need to have communications, we have to have siren controls, so the Seabrook, you know, station siren control, so there's some appliance that we have to accommodate for. And the way we envision it, coming together, and we're working it all out now, is that's all gonna be right here, you know, and so there'll be the MEMA, Seabrook stuff, the secondary dispatch, primary dispatch, copy stations and all that stuff, you know, report generated, and copies, and whatever you gotta do right there. And this whole wall is going to be monitors, because this whole place is all sets of exterior surveillance, interior surveillance, the cell surveillance, there's a lot of stuff going on there. And so, you know, that needs to be up front in the dispatcher's faces, for them to pay attention on. So everything facing this way, including the service window, having those there, you know, it kind of puts everything, all views forward, are going to be productive. That is the service window, that'll be bullet-resistant glass, it's about two inches thick, with the pass-through Kevlar ballistic-rated sheathing in this general area, so that'll be in compliance with, you know, what we, what a modern station should have, unfortunately, these days. So a person will come in, we'll actually, we'll walk up there and see what they see when they come in. Any questions about what's going on in here?
No, I just want to say the false floor is brilliant.
Yeah.
That'll help adapt to 50 years of modifications.
Okay, we talked about the break room, the next room to your right, right there, is sergeant's room. So we have three sergeants, and the first thing to look at, I'll breathe, have you seen the sergeant's room now, they're working out some sergeants, you immediately think, this isn't gonna work. They have so much stuff, is it proprietary signage, like Simon Jenkins is our FTO, a field training officer, defensive tactics officer, he has a lot of equipment, he does all our training, and you look at his desk, and it's just amazing, the stuff that he has around there. But what's nice is, that's why I showed the attic first, he doesn't have to store that stuff in his, in his office, he can have a locker, he can have something up on the, up on the third floor, and keep this as a nice functioning office. Desk, chair, filing cabinet, a guest chair for each person, they have their whole closet in the back there, and this will be, this will be very functional, very functional. So that's where the sergeants will work out of. Now, this is a secured door that segregates the working area of the police department, this is the lobby. That's a public restroom, which is gonna be great, because it is so sad to keep on telling somebody, we don't have, you know, come to the police station, you're expecting to use a facility, you can't. We can't oblige them, but now we can, and that's nice, we're happy for that. So that's where their bathroom's going to be. And this is a very, very important and efficient space, this is a, it's just an interview area, but it's kind of like goes between going into the police station and having to sit down, and now you're in a police station and having a conversation with somebody, can I ask you a question, or I have a personal problem I just want to talk to you quickly about, it's a nice place to just step in to show them, talk to you. It's, it just the atmosphere of it, and the psychological calmingness of, hey, it's better if you're in a police station, but now, if you want to talk to somebody, you're buzzing through doors, going down the halls, and into, you know, into an interview room, this can be more, you know, conducive to, you know, what can we do to help, you know, just have a conversation. And it's, you know, right off the lobby, and it's nice. It's also gonna be used as the firearms processing area, because they have a lot of traffic with people coming in, just to renew their firearm licenses. To bring them in, out back, and do all that, that's disruptive to the operation, you know, and you don't want, you don't want to disrupt that. Come in here, there's a table, all the stuff that needs to be done can be done right here. The only time anybody would have to go to the back and use the facilities back there is if it's a new application, and they have to get fingerprinted once, if it's just a renewal, they don't have to get fingerprinted, it's just a renewal, and everything can be done right here, and then they're off the door, you know, so this is just a really nice space to have in any, you know, modern, you know, efficient police station. I mean, I guess you can even apply it to yourself, if you had an issue, and you had, you just wanted to talk to somebody about the, if you want to walk through a whole police station, be buzzing through doors, like get smart, you know, and then, or you want to just take, you know, step off into a comfortable room and have a conversation. So that's kind of the spirit of that. This is the vestibule, there's going to be a storefront doors here, storefront doors there, it's just the entry to the entry, you come in, there'll probably be some sort of display thing or whatever over here, just a kind of a greeting area, and then you'll walk into the lobby. And this here is the janitor's lobby, right there.
Kind of nice, John, too, because that's a cable end, so you don't have snow coming down.
Yep, good point, yeah.
It's a really good design.
Yep. Bob, did you want to touch on anything as far as the site, you know, the site work, or anything like that?
I think, you know what, guys, you've got a lot, you've digested a lot today. What the handout is basically, what the finished product is going to look like with Uh, what, the handout is basically what the finished product is going to look like with the, with the parking, uh, the perspective outside, and, and you have now, I think, a good working knowledge of how everything kind of lays out and, and the sequence and how everything is accessed or, or the travel pathways, so. It's the, police stations require a lot of pre-planning, and, and sadly, a lot of stuff goes into them. I mean, the technology, and we'll probably have two miles of cat six cabling in here before we're done. And every place else is wireless. But from a law enforcement standpoint, wireless routers aren't, aren't viable because of protecting of all the information and what have you. John has been an invaluable partner on this, and has spent numerous hours, days, and weeks, and months, and years, uh, sorting through each one of the, each one of these little rooms requires a dumpster dive to go through it and figure out, okay, here's what we need, how do we make it fit? Do we, can we steal two feet from here, can we get eight inches there? Now, we need a bathroom. That, you know, it, it's just all those little things, kind of like doing anything around the house at home, you, you got to kind of beat it to death, you know, to get it to come out right. And.
Once that masonry's up, you're not moving.
Yep. Once it's done, it's done, it's there.
Yeah, so, and it's, uh, there's always changes, I mean, I run over a couple of things on the COVID changes. Uh, we just went through every plug, switch, outlet, uh, data port uh, at this stage, and we're going to move some stuff around. There's going to be some deletions, there'll be some relocations, and there'll be a couple of adds.
That's where it gets closer, isn't it?
Yeah, and, and, but it's exactly the time, uh, John and Math are just spent better part of a week going over all that. Uh, and then doing coordination meeting with the, the filed submitters that are providing the services. But overall, it, during COVID, to be really on schedule and on budget is, you know, so far, a knock on wood.
Yeah. Oh, cool, what else to the team?
You know, once again, guys, not only what Bob has done, but B C Construction has done a good job.
They've been, they've been a full partner on this project, the, the design team, the O P M team, and the, uh, build team. It, it's been a collaboration, which is, which is, which is good.
I've sat in on most of the construction meetings, and it's a really, it's a great team. Nice building.
But that's, I mean, that's pretty much it, uh, team, and, thank you, I mean, you know what? Newbury is one of these small little towns, and it isn't for the volunteers that come up and man the watch.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Well.
Thank you, it's a lot for a citizen to take on a project like this, and we're lucky to have your skillset.
Well, let's, let's not forget about that, like, my, my partner, Prime Eric Swan.
Yeah.
Eric spent better part of seven years here doing this stuff.
Yeah.
But, it, it's good to get it to this point, I mean, this is such a, a milestone. We didn't do a, a groundbreaking, because it was a swamp. We, where it's not a full.
When it's that way, it's a, it's.
Well, this is, this is kind of the topping out party, but it, it's one of those things that, uh, you've been watching this, you're, you're on the select board, and we just wanted you to come over and get, get an idea of where it was at, and have some firsthand knowledge of it all, but. And thank you for what all you do. You know, it's, it's interesting times.
For sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, very nice to meet you.
Nice meeting. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
John, thank you, great job, by the way, John, here. I would have been just looking at the plan, and it was to try to keep somewhat in line of a residential look in a, you know, on a, on a municipal building.